Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday evening, March 23, 2021. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Members of the Board of Selectmen that will be participating remotely this evening in this meeting are myself, Mary Power, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. First item of business is the approval of the minutes. We have four...oh, excuse me. Before I do that, may I please ask that if anyone is recording this meeting or is intending to record or take photographs during this meeting, would you please identify yourself at this time by raising your hand? Okay, seeing none. Now, the first item of business on our agenda is we have four sets of minutes to be approved.
Mary, I'm prepared to move on all the minutes except March 2.
Okay, that would be fine with me. Bill, is that good for you?
That works.
Okay. I'd accept motions.
Well, first, I'll make a motion to approve the minute stated February 23, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye.
I'll move to approve the minutes dated February 25, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thank you.
And I'd make a motion to approve the minutes dated February 26, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. The next item of business on the Board's agenda is a public hearing on the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 1,250 feet of 4-inch gas main in Pleasant Street and 200 feet of 2-inch gas main in Downing Street. We're joined by Town Engineer J.R. Frye and from National Grid, Mary Mulrooney. J.R., I'm going to turn this over to you. Good evening.
There we go. Good evening, Mary. Thank you. National Grid is proposing to relay 1,250 feet of 4-inch gas main in Pleasant Street and 200 feet of 2-inch gas main in Downing Street. These mains will replace aged mains that are 49, between 49 and 67 years old in Pleasant and Downing Street.
And, J.R., could you please describe when this work is going to start, how long approximately you think it will take, as well as neighbor-in-a-butter notification?
Yes. National Grid is handling neighbor-in-a-butter notifications on all of this. We've already had some public outreach, and so they...the representative from National Grid has been already in contact with some of the neighbors who were concerned about the work and making sure that, you know, they were connected to the new main, frankly. The work itself, we're hoping that this work will occur directly after the work in Stoddard Road. So they're looking to start that work in Stoddard Road, wrapping around into the other side of Pleasant Street shortly, and hopefully they'll be able to roll right into this work and get all of this work done as well, as we are planning to pave Pleasant Street this summer.
Okay.
The actual duration of the work, I would anticipate three to four weeks.
Okay. And Chair, in terms of neighbor and, you know, notification of people who will be directly impacted by this project?
They will...I believe, and Mary can chime in on this, but I believe their policy is to send out a notice two weeks in advance, and then within a week in advance, there will be door hangings as well.
Before turning it over to my colleagues for questions, I just wanted to invite Mary Mulrooney from National Grid. Mary, if you had anything to add to J.R.'s presentation at this point, or I can turn it over to my colleagues for questions.
Good evening. No, thank you, J.R. Did a fantastic job, so I guess you can turn it over to your colleagues.
Great, great. I think we'll lead off with Bill Ramsey. So, Bill, any questions for J.R. or Mary on this installation?
No specific questions. I just noted in the permit request that one of the lines is almost 70 years old, and the other main is almost 50 years old. So these are definitely in need of replacement, and I have nothing further. I'm glad that Grid is notifying the residents in advance.
Thank you. Joe, questions for J.R. or Mary?
Yeah, thank you. It wasn't clear to me what time of day the work would be undertaken.
So this would generally be undertaken between 7:00 and 6:00, but for usually eight-hour days. However, they were instructed to coordinate with myself and with the transportation coordinator for the school district, as the work does occur directly in front of the high school.
You anticipated my next question, so I'm glad that was going on, and that coordination is going on.
Yes.
And any estimate of the type of noise associated with this work?
It is construction, but we don't anticipate that they'd be running into any ledge, so I don't anticipate any hammering. So it would be nominal construction noise, but I don't believe it would significantly disturb studies or anything going on in the school. And other than if they were right outside your house, I don't know that you'd notice it if you were in your residence.
And last question, are there plans, or is there a need for any police detail to coordinate traffic issues?
Absolutely, and National Grid and their contractor will...are required to coordinate that work with the Hingham Police Department.
Thank you very much. Excellent job. I appreciate your attention here.
Thank you.
I don't have any further questions. I would just note that Downing Street is also...we had a Board of Water Commissioners meeting before this, and Downing Street is also getting a new water main. And, you know, this is an example of the coordination in the town between, you know, road utility work in the roads and then our road program. And I think for the residents of Downing Street, they're going to get new utilities and then a road that will be paved and repaired, and hopefully then, you know, it will be under a moratorium for five years. I'm going to open it up to the public for questions and comments, and just the protocol for those who are here for the first time, and we welcome everybody. We ask that you please give your name and address for the record. If you could please direct questions or comments to the Chair, to me. If I can't answer the question, I will direct the question to someone who can. I'd like to recognize Beth. Beth, I think you just muted yourself. If you could please unmute yourself?
Here we go.
I'm unmuted, I believe.
You are.
This is Rockoff at 36 Pleasant Street in Hingham.
Hey, Beth, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good thanks.
I hope everybody is staying safe and healthy. But I had been nicely in touch with Mr. Frye and Mr. Tierney, I believe it was, and they were kind enough to respond to my questions. But when I asked why Pleasant Street was not getting a water line to connect the new lines which have been coming down Main and Union around on Stoddard to Pleasant at the junction there, as well as having new lines on Main Street, and the fact that we are a high-pressured line that has always done womp-a-tuck in the high school, and he did say that they were going to have some extra lines to accommodate that down Union and Middle. But now that you've just mentioned that Downing Street is getting the new, I don't understand why Pleasant Street would not be included in that since there will be a moratorium. And we did have a big burst on a line, I believe...
Seven years ago.
Seven years ago on the water line, and we had to wait for the state to come down because of asbestos, and that meant that the high school was canceled. Would this not be a good time to include that in the plan?
Sure. So, Beth, thank you for the question. I think what I'd like to do, because your question relates to a water line, and tonight, this agenda item is actually a gas line replacement. I would be happy to take as a to-do to speak to Water Superintendent Russell Tierney tomorrow. Tom and I actually have a meeting scheduled with him, and we would be glad to bring this to his attention and ask him if he could please give you a phone call. I think it would probably be best if you could speak to him directly, and I think if you can speak to him directly, it'll just be a better conversation. So if that's agreeable to you, we're happy to do that.
That's wonderful. I also would like them to note that before John Riley, God rest his soul, died, he had mentioned that there was a pipe that was not set appropriately in front of my neighbor's house at 44 Pleasant Street, because every time the fire trucks, which use Pleasant Street because of turning access, and the buses go over a certain area, it makes some thudding noise, that possibly they could address that. I don't know anything about setting pipes, but he kept commenting about how every time he would drive over it in a big truck, it was not set appropriately. So I don't know who that would be to address that issue.
Yeah, thank you. Tom, is that something we can direct to J.R.?
That would be my recommendation. J.R. may not know on the fly, but...
Right, absolutely.
If not, we can always circle back with Beth.
J.R., if we could, if that is something that you could please take a look at, in particular, it would not be clear to me which pipe that might be. So as we're going about this project, if this is something that you could look into and potentially report back to the Board and Dr. and Mrs. Rockoff, that would be very helpful. And J.R., if you wanted to respond to us, we can forward the information to Dr. and Mrs. Rockoff.
That'll work.
Okay, thank you.
I'll follow up with a response to the Board.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Mary.
I'd like to recognize Insa Elliott. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, I'm at Insa Elliott. I'm at 11 Pleasant Street, and I don't know if this was covered in the first 60 seconds that I missed, but I was wondering if...I had a couple of questions. Will the entire street be affected from the very...so I'm between Downing Street and Main Street. Is the entire street going to be affected, and is...what is the...how is the access at Pond Street and at the intersection of Main Street going to be affected?
Thank you. J.R., could you respond to Ms. Elliott's questions?
Yes, so basically, the entire length of Pleasant Street will be affected right through Union Street or right up to Union Street. And then, for the most part, what you'll see is there will be segments of road, one side of the road typically blocked off, and there will be usually on a road like that, two detail officers assigned to direct traffic. They'll also make sure that residents have access to their driveways throughout the construction period, so regardless of how close they're working to your home, you know, at the worst, you may be asked to park on the street a couple doors down if you need to leave your home, and they're going to be working in front of it during the day. But for the most part, they're very accommodating and try to be as little inconvenienced as possible. I can't promise none because it's construction.
Of course. But if we were to have our...so I have a delivery van in my driveway because that's part of my business.
Yep.
Would I...so I'll need to be able to leave my driveway, obviously. So I would know a day or so in advance if my driveway would be blocked, so I could make sure that I was out by...it's 7:00, right? That's when construction would...
Yeah, 7:00 is the earliest, and depending on coordination with school, if the high school's back in session full-time at that point, I don't know what the schedule is right now, but if it is back in schedule full-time, there may be some coordination even with the start time. There may be a delayed start so that...to allow the initial influx of kids to school, then they'd start work, and they may end up working a little later on those days. But the long and the short of it is, you'll see them working, they'll be coming towards you, and you'll have a day or two in advance probably, or you'll see somebody out marking the street, and you can talk to them about your need for access.
Okay. And Pond Street, will Pond Street...
They're not doing any work in Pond Street, so there will be access in one direction or another from Pleasant Street.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thanks, Ms. Elliott. J.R., thank you for answering all those questions. Is there anyone else who has any questions about the gas line replacement project? Okay, seeing none, I'd accept a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 1,250 feet of 4-inch gas main in Pleasant Street and 200 feet of 2-inch gas main in Downing Street. The gas main in Pleasant Street will originate at the intersection of Pleasant Street and Main Street, connecting into the existing 2-inch gas main and continuing easterly in Pleasant Street to its connection approximately 40 feet west of the intersection with Union Street. The gas main in Downing Street will originate at the intersection with Pleasant Street and continue in Downing Street to completion at approximately number seven Downing Street. These gas mains will replace existing 2-inch coated steel dated 1954 and 1972 respectively. The age of the abandoned main is between 49 and 67 years old. This approval is subject to the stipulations of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated March 11, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. J.R., Mary, thank you both very much.
Thank you, and have a good evening.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, same to you. Before we move on to our next agenda item, I would just like to recognize the Chair of the School Committee, Carrie Nie, so that she can call the School Committee to order for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mary. I would like to call the March 23 meeting of the School Committee to order, and I would note that I am Carrie Nie, I'm the Chair of the School Committee, and I'm participating remotely, as are my colleagues, Michelle Eyre, Jen Benham, Ness Corenti, Carlos De Silva, Libby Luwicky, and Liza O'Reilly.
Great, thanks. Welcome, everybody. The next item of business on our agenda is a discussion and vote regarding the appointment of two police lieutenant positions. Candidates being considered are Stephen Durth, John Marquardt, and Nicholas Smith. Those of you who tuned into our meeting last week had the opportunity to see the Board interviewing three sergeants from the Hingham Police Department for two open lieutenant positions. It was...I think we were all so impressed with the caliber of all of the candidates, and what I'd like to do at this point is introduce Chief of Police David Jones and ask him if he would like to make a recommendation for the Board's consideration with respect to the two appointments that are...with respect to the two appointments.
Good evening, Mary. Thank you very much. The Hingham Police Department held chief's panel interviews with the candidates for a permanent police lieutenant on March 24 of this year. The panel consisted of Chief Edward Lee of the Noel Police Department, Chief Phil Tavarez of the Marshfield Police Department, and Chief Mark Thompson of the Situate Police Department. Deputy Chief Ryan O'Shea and I were present but did not participate in the interview or scoring of the questions. The panel reported that Sergeant Stephen Durth was an enthusiastic and experienced supervisor who was able to draw from his varying roles as a field training officer, court prosecutor, and the department's public information and social media officer. They found that Sergeant John Marquardt demonstrated a commanding understanding of law enforcement principles and showed progressive professional development throughout his career. They stated that Sergeant Nicholas Smith held impressive qualities, especially in his ability to develop individual connections within the community and his aptitude for technology and maintaining departmental initiatives. The panel noted that the candidates performed very well and that all of them would be able to assume the challenging role of a police lieutenant. After watching these candidates interview with this panel, I was both impressed with their responses and proud of the representation of the department. I was equally impressed with their performance last Tuesday evening at their interviews before this board. I wanted to be able to present these three candidates to you for your consideration for promotion to lieutenant, and although I wish we had three lieutenant vacancies, there are currently only two. While this is an extremely difficult decision with three highly qualified candidates, I am recommending the top two scoring candidates from the Civil Service list, Sergeant Stephen Durth and Sergeant John Marquardt, be promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Sergeant Smith is an extremely competitive candidate with a very bright future, and I'm confident that he will come before this board again, and I want to thank you for your dedication to this process and for your support.
Thank you, Chief. I'm going to first turn it over to Joe Fisher, who is the Board's liaison to the Police Department. Joe?
Yes, thank you, Mary, and thank you, Chief. Would you explain how you get from the letter of March 11, which is the evaluation, which has a rank ordering of 1, 2, and 3, to a different rank ordering reflected in your recommendation?
Sure. So the process, basically from start to finish, it might help better explain, is that sergeants who are eligible for promotion sign up to take the Civil Service test. In Hingham, it's an assessment center that we use, and approved vendor runs that assessment center using trained assessors to rate the candidates during realistic scenarios. The assessor scores from that assessment center are then sent to Civil Service for a ranking using a predetermined formula, including their education and experience, and then the final score is sent to the candidate, and then a list is established. So when we're hiring for a promotion, we request that list from Civil Service. We then hold chief's panel interviews, and we perform those interviews with area chiefs, and they're ranked based on their performance in that interview process. So we look for, you know, qualities that stand out for each candidate, and if there's a need for a bypass, you know, any reasons that may exist from their scoring on the questions or their background in the department. So there were no reasons for bypass in this round of interviews, and therefore, we're bound by Civil Service rules that if we were to go outside of the ranking order from Civil Service would require a reason for bypass, which does not exist in this case.
Got it. I guess from my perspective, from the interviews that we had last week, I've got to say, each of these sergeants were exceptional, and I share your view that it's a tough decision, and I wish we had three spots to offer because each one really performed remarkably and demonstrated both sensitivity to issues as well as a strong commitment to the town. So I appreciate your recommendation, and I want each of these candidates to know that they are very well respected by the Selectmen. Thank you. I've got nothing else.
Thank you. Bill?
No question for the Chief, but just a couple of comments about the process and about the candidates. So I would...I think all three of these gentlemen are on the line tonight, and I will tell each of them, if we had the opportunity to hire three lieutenants, I think without hesitation we'd be hiring all three of you. But unfortunately, we don't. We only have two openings, and I'm going to concur with the Chief's recommendation tonight to hire Sergeant...to promote Sergeant Durth and Sergeant Marquardt, and for a couple different reasons. First of all, you know, I've worked with Sergeant Durth on the Traffic Committee for several years when he was a traffic sergeant, and, you know, I was just so impressed with the way he interacted with the public, the way he tried to help people, you know, and the Traffic Committee is kind of a tough committee. You can't always help residents with some of their concerns, but his efforts, his respectfulness and the way he tried was just so impressive to me. And I know he's going to make a fantastic lieutenant. I've heard great things about him down at the court as well. Sergeant Marquardt, I mentioned this last week, but you can't really mention it enough in my mind. He's a combat veteran. He's a recipient of the Purple Heart, and our town owes him a debt of gratitude for what he does for our Police Department, but our country owes him one as well. And I think Sergeant Marquardt, operationally, is without question one of the best police officers we have, and I speak with many members of the Police Department on a regular basis, and every one of them tell me about his leadership and his character and integrity, and I think he's going to make a fine lieutenant. And to Sergeant Smith, as I said, if we could promote all three of you, I would enthusiastically be doing that tonight, but I truly believe that your future with the department is a very bright one, and I am optimistic and confident that we will be seeing you again in the future. So looking forward to...and again, I want to emphasize what a pleasure it was to interview all three of these officers. The questions we asked were not easy questions. They were challenging questions. They were difficult questions, and I re-watched our meeting, and I was just so impressed by all three of these police officers. So thank you.
Bill and Joe, thank you for your very thoughtful comments. I would just add that this is a very vigorous process. There are, you know, interviews with chiefs from a panel from outside Hingham. There are the interviews that we've conducted. I would concur with my colleagues that...and with the recommendation that was given to Chief Jones, which is all three of these candidates are prepared right now to step into the lieutenant role, and therefore, even though we only have two positions, I know it's only a matter of time. I had the great honor and privilege of being able to appoint then Officer Smith to become a sergeant, and Sergeant, I would tell you that when I'm, you know, around town and when I come upon, you know, a scene where there's police presence and I see you there, I know that the situation and the people affected by it are in good hands. All three of you are excellent officers. You are all looked up to by your colleagues and respected, and we respect and value each one of you as well. And as my colleagues have said, not an easy decision, but I also think it's a matter...it's only a matter of time before we are appointing all three of these candidates to the position of lieutenant. Before the Board makes a formal vote, is there anyone in the audience who has a question or wishes to make a comment? Seeing none? Yes, Joe?
I could just add, I mean, the comments that were made... I could just add, I mean, the comments that were made about each of the candidates is true. It's a great reflection, not only on the candidates, but on the department that has groomed them. I will say of the three candidates, Nicholas Smith, in my view, had the best sense of humor. And I look forward to his continued involvement and growth within the department.
Thank you, Joe. Joe, I'd invite you to maybe make a motion as the liaison for the board to the police department.
Yes, I'd move to appoint Stephen Durth and John Marquardt as permanent full-time police lieutenants for the town of Hingham.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Lieutenant Marquardt, Lieutenant Durth, congratulations on behalf of the board and on behalf of the town. Sergeant Smith, thank you for your dedication to the town. We are just so proud of all of you. And Chief Jones, I just want to say that one of your most important undertakings as chief of police is personnel management. You ran a seamless process. It was rigorous. You had the candidates prepared. Your assessment of the candidates and your recommendation was well-written. It was thoughtful. And I also want to congratulate you on a job well-done with respect to this process. I know that we're going to have some sergeant interviews coming up over the next few weeks. And I would just say, Chief, that on this, you're off to a great start. So thank you as well.
Thank you very much, Mary. Appreciate it.
And Chief, just before we close out, I didn't know if you had anything that you wanted to add just in closing, before we move on to our next topic?
Yeah, I'm just incredibly proud of the way that these three represented themselves and the department as a whole. Looking forward to working with both Lieutenant Durth and Lieutenant Marquardt, and a continued working relationship with Sergeant Smith.
Terrific. And I also noticed that Deputy Chief O'Shea is on the line, as well as many members of the Hingham Police Department. Deputy Chief, we appreciate your involvement in this process as well. And we also appreciate the interest and the engagement of all of the members of the Hingham Police Department. The Hingham Police Department has really shown over the past few weeks with, throughout this process and through the candidate interviews. And we will look forward to the swearing-in of these lieutenants very soon. So we thank you for that. Chief Jones, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much.
And actually, Chief, before we let you go, I think we have one more item of business, which is to nominate Leslie Badger, one of the most well-known and well-liked members of the Hingham Police Department as the inspector of animals for the town of Hingham. And that's no offense to anybody else, but Leslie's kind of a rock star in Hingham.
Thank you.
So Tom or Michelle, is there any, is there sort of any prep you have to give us on this vote?
No, this is an annual appointment. Leslie's been our animal control officer since I've been here, probably a lot longer than that. And she does a fantastic job. I highly recommend this appointment.
And I see the chief nodding, and I would concur with that. Joe or Bill, any questions before this vote?
I'd just like to know if Leslie Badger has anything, any statement she'd like to make to us, or any questions of us?
I would just like to say thank you. I appreciate all your kind words, year after year. And I hope to continue to stand up to all the things that you say about me and continue to do a good job for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question or comment before the board takes this vote?
I just have one quick comment.
Please.
So we all think of animals in Hingham, and coyotes, and skunks, and the like. So one day last year or so, I was looking out my window, and there was some 10,000 bees buzzing around outside my window at Town Hall. And sure enough, here comes Leslie an hour later, dressed in a beekeeper's suit, and up in a lift outside my window, trying to solve the problem. So animals come in many shapes and sizes.
And you know, they may, but there's one constant, and that is that Leslie Badger will show up and take care of the issue, whatever it is. And all kidding aside, Leslie, this community respects what you do, and we trust what you do so much. And that's really a reflection on how you approach the job and your ability to communicate with our citizens, in particular communicating with a lot of the children, as you have with some of the coyote things, is really just so, it's a real special talent. And I think that, I think that it just really helps in the community, whether it's a situation involving a domestic animal, or bees, or wildlife. So we really do appreciate everything you do for this community.
Thank you. I really appreciate your words.
I would accept a motion.
I'd make a motion to nominate Leslie Badger as the inspector of animals for the town of Hingham.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Leslie. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.
The next item of business on our agenda this evening is an FY22 budget discussion and vote. I'll just give people a sense of how this is going, how this discussion, how this item is going to be discussed tonight. I'm going to begin by asking Tom Mayo and Michelle Montegor to provide the board with some additional information, primarily just in response to a few questions that the board received from members of the advisory committee. Following that, the advisory committee, the ACES Subcommittee, met last night, and I received some information from the chair, Dave Anderson, that as we have in the past, I will share that information with the board. I will then open it up to members of the audience for any final comments or information. I would also just stress that we've, I think we really have most of the information that we need. So I will open it up for brief comments if there's additional information that anyone feels would be compelling, or that the board hasn't already heard. Then at that point, I'm going to close it off, and the board will have discussion about the entire FY22 budget, and that'll include all 50 budgets that will be voting. And then the board will vote. I would also just let people know in advance that the Board of Selectmen, we vote on all the town budgets, and we make those recommendations to the advisory committee. Thursday evening, it will be the advisory committee that will be making its votes on the budget, and it is the advisory committee's votes that become the recommendation that goes into the warrant for town meetings' consideration. So that's just kind of a little bit about how the process works. So with that, Tom and Michelle, I know we had gotten a few questions from members of the advisory committee with respect to elements of the municipal budget. So I know you've prepared some additional information for our consideration this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. This will be a very brief overview of kind of clarifying a couple of things and giving some more insight to what our, on the municipal, my additional requests on the municipal budget included. And we'll take a stab at clarifying some of those as they related to some questions we received, as you said, from the advisory committee. So Michelle, if you jump down to slide two. So you'll remember, this is the list of additional requests that we made. The only real change here is you'll see down the bottom, we had recommended a $500,000 infusion into capital for this one-year infusion into capital. Just because of the way everything kind of flushed its way through the budgeting cycle, that number is looking now like it will be 300,000 instead of 500,000. But other than that, the recommendations in the additional requests are as they were when you saw them last. Next slide. So the advisory committee asked a few different questions, and they were mainly focused on these three items. This is where we'll focus this conversation. The Assistant Town Administrator for Finance, a heavy equipment operator over at the transfer station, as well as the recreation field, and the recreation field maintenance program that's being proposed for FY22. Michelle? So with the TA, the Assistant Town Administrator recommendation, we were really trying to fill three main needs, or three main issues we were trying to solve. One was a workload or, well, excuse me. The first was the financial planning. This is the big picture, financial planning, long-range financial planning, working with advisory, working with the finance team, working with the school department, and trying to make sure that the financial planning that is done is being done well and thoroughly. Secondly, this is, the other, one of the other main items we're trying to solve with this additional town administrator is a workload one. It speaks to capacity, oversight, like we say here, communications and responsiveness. All of those would be beneficiaries of having an additional Assistant Town Administrator available. And in some ways, our office becomes a bottleneck because of the pace of the community and the workload. Michelle and I are only two human beings that are very busy during the course of the day. And as a result, sometimes we're not as accessible as we would prefer to be to our department heads and boards and committees. And we want to make sure that everyone is getting access to us for decisions and guidance as appropriate. So as we move through this, you'll see some, try to get a sense, and I'll try to show a sense of the size and complexity of the town and operations, and how they've grown over the years, and how the responsibility of the town administrator's office has increased and changed since the TA Special Act. So just to recap, this item would in fact create a second Assistant Town Administrator. We're referring to that as the ATA for Finance, and our current Assistant Town Administrator position would be that for operations. Michelle? So just a quick history lesson here. Back in 1992, the town was governed by an executive secretary that moved to a town administrator, along with most of the state, back in 95. At the time, one year later, an assistant to the town administrator was hired to work in the office with the TA. And some nine years or so later, that position was changed to the Assistant Town Administrator. So for the past 16 or so years, we have been working under that model. It's important to note that back in 2009 and 2010, the Board of Selectmen, along with the staff at the time, the town administrator and administrative staff, were discussing, in fact, the Assistant Town Administrator of Finance and Assistant Town Administrator of Operations model as far back as 2009 and 10, so some 10, 12 years ago. Michelle? This slide is an attempt at trying to underscore the change in the town over the past 15 years. The bars, the green bars are highlighting the change in our revenue picture. We've nearly doubled our total revenues in that 15-year window. I like the blue line. The blue line is the number of Board of Selectmen meetings.
I don't like that line.
Board of Selectmen candidates, turn off your video. Don't look.
I started by saying I liked it. You're right, Joe. But it's, you know what I think it does is it underscores the complexity and the pace of the town. I mean, we are, there is so much more going on now than there was 15 years ago when we were working, in essence, with the same model government we have now. So those 81 meetings are indicative. And remember, and every one of those agendas that goes with those 81 meetings is usually five to 10 items that all require significant input and work to make the policy changes that need to be made. So again, I just think that it's indicative of the growth and the pace of the community. Michelle? So this is just a recap of the TA Special Act. Back in 2015, it was passed as a bylaw town meeting, became a special act with some state legislation being passed in 2016. It was in large part an effort at expanding and codifying the town administrator's role in local government, specifically with regards to personnel, the financial picture, and putting together all the financial review of the town. We have, the TA is now the Chief Procurement Officer. We make all property management decisions, et cetera, out of our office. There are four specifically identified evaluative criteria in the TA Special Act for the town administrator, and you'll see how broad these categories are. Supervising all municipal employees, with the exception of the two chiefs and the DPW Director, I make all appointments. And the police department, the Board of Selectmen also make police appointments, as you saw tonight. My office administers town government. That means that we run the town in all aspects of it. And you'll see in a minute when we get back into the org chart, some 23 different departments are directly affected. We effectuate the policy of this board and others, town meeting, other boards, this board. We have to find a way to implement the policy directions that the residents of the community put forward. And then, of course, this board is helpful in establishing goals, and we need to make sure that those goals are met and implemented. Michelle? So just to underscore some of the large items that are looming over the town, these are large planning items that are going to come to fruition now or in the short term or midterm future. But these are real, and they're before us. And they're not going to lessen the burden on my office or the town in general. They will increase it. We have multiple large projects, including a bunch of large building projects, which take an inordinate amount of effort to plan through, which the school department knows well, as they're currently in the midst of their MSBA program with Foster. There's a lot to those projects. On our side, it would be the Public Safety Facility, as well as the Senior Center. Master Planning Process just completed. We're going to need to implement the recommendations of the Master Planning Process in an efficient and effective way. South Hingham Development, this is the future of the town's financial wherewithal. And how that area is developed is important. It needs to be done in a respectful way. It needs to be done with regard to the residents in the region and the town, or in that area, as well as town-wide. And it needs to be done within the confines or relative confines of our existing zoning. Lot of work. Revitalization of downtown, a lot of that work has begun, and we need to maintain that and keep that rolling. Climate change preparedness, we've heard a lot of that this year as we begin hopefully a new phase in terms of planning for climate change and resiliency. And of course, we just acquired the water system, so a three-town wide water system that now the town is responsible for managing. These are some items that we kind of pulled out to highlight the changing nature of the town, and again, the complexity and pace. Michelle? So some of the current shared responsibilities out of our office, I won't read all these. Some 200 employees, 400 elected and appointed officials across 60-some boards. Those are big numbers. Those 400 elected and appointed officials are all giving of their private time and their own resources to come and help their community. They expect, and properly and appropriately so, support from staff. And in many ways, that manifests itself through myself and my office with Michelle and Sharon and Heidi. And we do the best we can, but that's a lot of, that's a lot of support across a lot of boards. The emergency management stuff, so nobody plans for a pandemic. It happened this year, but that's not the driving force behind this request. There's just a, there's just a lot of work going on in this town. So you can see some of the others there. Again, I won't read them all. Michelle? The specific requests this year in this budget, the additional request is for an ATA of Finance. I'm anticipating that that role will assist with big picture and longer-term financial analysis, a deeper engagement with the budget process. We're going to ask that person to help investigate new sources of revenue. We've been talking about a grant writer for many years. This position will help coordinate that work with the department heads, as well as their own efforts. Federal funding, like what we just, the way we're balancing our budget this year, in large part. Pandemic financial impact, how that's going to Pandemic financial impact, how that's going to impact the town's finances for years to come. You know, coordination with boards and committees, that this is the, this is very important work that, uh, is being done to the best of our ability now, um, but in my opinion, could use, um, could use a bit more attention. We have, um, we're hoping to explore things like paperless options and scanning and digitizing, um, municipal records. And, uh, and this, this position would also be responsible for oversight, direct oversight of eight departments, which we'll go through here in a sec. So I, we showed you these, this is the, these, um, organizational charts last time. This is the current organizational chart, uh, and how things are managed now. There are some twenty-three departments reporting straight through to me. Uh, Michelle and I do the best we can to support those departments, but it is, uh, an unnes- and unfortunately haphazard, uh, approach to, to management. There's less structure there than I would like. We try our best to, to ask some of those folks to go to one or the other of us, but, um, it's not always successful. So what we are proposing is this. This is, you'll see on the left side, the ATA Finance, this is the new position we are requesting. Those, um, eight departments would report directly through to the ATA Finance. They include the finance team as well as the non-public facing departments. The ATA of Operations would manage the remaining, uh, ten, uh, eleven departments. And, um, in large part, those are the regulatory boards and committees, uh, or boards, excuse me, departments as well as the public, uh, public facing departments such as, um, library and elder services. Um, and then the, the four biggest departments we have, the DPW, Fire and Police, along with the water, uh, water system, um, we felt were, were appropriate to have direct reports through to me. And, um, and we think that this would be a, a very efficient and, uh, and appropriate structure to facilitate both, um, help down to the department heads as well as, uh, better communication, um, from them through to me and, uh, and my staff, whether it be the ATAs or otherwise. And then subsequently out to all of you. This was a, this was a comment I heard in my review last year. Appropriate communication out to the Board of Selectmen, and I think that this is a, this is a tool to help us get there. Michelle? That's it for this, right? So, uh, there, there were two remaining items, uh, that I'm going to ask Michelle to walk you through.
Sure, thanks, Tom. So we got a few questions from the Advisory Committee about, um, our request for a heavy equipment operator at the transfer station and then also about the recreation field maintenance program. So for the DPW request, the questions were about, um, approximate savings and overtime and how much of the request was fueled by what we're seeing now during the pandemic. In speaking with our DPW superintendent, he's estimating a savings of up to ten thousand dollars in overtime at the transfer station. He has talked about the significant growth there specifically in the scale and truck operations, and basically just that our current staff there has not kept up with the operations growth. So the operations have outpaced the team that we have in place, and they're needed to, needing to do a lot of the work required at the transfer station on overtime, um, on off hours. The example, or one of the examples he gave us was about needing to clean up the site, um, at the end of the weekend, um, to avoid state violations and other things. Um, and talking about what he saw or has seen pre-pandemic, the vehicle trips every week were already progressing upwards from about seven thousand trips a week to nine thousand a week. And then during the pandemic, what he's seeing is that nine thousand is, is much more steady, and they're peaking at almost eleven and a half thousand vehicle trips per week. So it's not, the growth was already happening pre-pandemic. The situation is obviously making it acute. But he is looking at his operations pre-pandemic and trying to right-size the staff there. He had requested two positions this year. We're recommending one. If that is able to go through the budget process, we'll see how that's working out, and we'll reevaluate the request going forward. The other item that we wanted to address was a question about the field maintenance program. Just wanted to clarify that, yes, this is an annual expense. It's not a one-time, um, funding item. It's, as was recommended in the Weston and Sampson Field Study Report that we recently completed, this was one of the first recommendations for the town to implement, um, a centralized field maintenance program so that we are adequately taking care of all of our outdoor facilities that are currently owned and managed by the Board of Selectmen, the Rec Department and the School Department. So this would benefit, um, our outdoor facilities townwide, and it's sort of the first step in the process of laying the groundwork for any future capital investments we may want to make in our fields. So I think that was it there, Tom.
Yep, thank you, Michelle. So those were the, um, those were the general, the, the general category of questions we'd, we'd received was on those three, um, items. And of course, if there are any questions from, from you, you, you folks, then we're here.
Sure, I think maybe because of, of, we've just gone through this. So this would be a good time to just, um, Bill and Joe, see if you have questions. Tom and Michelle, this is just excellent work, and thank you for being so responsive to the questions from the Advisory Committee. Uh, Joe, questions or comments for Michelle or Tom, uh, with respect to the, the materials we've just seen?
Uh, I do, again, first, just to share your, your thanks. Um, and Tom, I, I didn't realize here that the position initially started as Executive Secretary back in nineteen ninety-two. So I may be referring to you in that term, uh, as we go.
It may not have been me, but yeah.
Okay. The, um, the chart, that, just commenting the chart showing, uh, the number of day, uh, number of meetings, uh, that works to, that, that, just so you know, that works out to a, uh, a select, a, a selectmen meeting, twenty-two percent of the days of every year. And, um, and that, of course, as you know, does not include your work as well as our work and participating in other meetings, uh, meetings of the Public Safety Facility Group, Senior Center, uh, activities, meetings of the South Hingham Development Working Group, Water Company Meetings, uh, Affordable Housing Meetings. So, uh, that number of meetings is low in my book in terms of what you actually do, what you and Michelle actually do. In terms of, um, the ATA positions, uh, if you can go to the chart, uh, Michelle, the next page after this one. Let's see. Uh, keep going. Next, next, the one that shows the, the new org chart.
This one?
No, which, there we go. So, um, uh, Tom, to what extent do you see either of the ATA positions working with you or working on DPW, Fire, Police and Water, uh, which I see are still reporting directly to you, but typically I think you will need involvement of the, uh, one or both of the ATAs?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a great question, Joe. Thank you for that. So this is not intended as, you know, firewalls behind, between, uh, departments, et cetera. I am available to anyone and everyone organization-wide, um, always. Um, and I would suggest that there are times when the ATA of Operations, for instance, may be working with the Building Department and need to include the fire, and we'll be working with, set with the chief, et cetera. There was absolutely going to be crossover work. I would say, um, there are times, you know, hopefully when I'm on vacation someday where that stuff is going to happen. These, the, the ATAs will be able to backfill those, those times. Um, you know, i- if I'm in meetings and the chiefs have an, have an immediate, have an immediate need or the like, all of these things are going to happen. This is a fluid concept, but the, the idea is to give the department heads a bit of a focus on who their direct report is more, um, will readily and, and regularly be.
Yep, I mean, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Michelle.
If I could just add to that, in speaking with Andover, which is one of our benchmark communities who has a similar structure, although they have a deputy town manager and a, an assistant town manager instead of two ATMs, they said that when they went to this structure recently, it improved capacity across the organization because the departments had a clear person to go through. So there was just a better chain of command and, and communication going on.
Yep, so that's, that's exactly where I was going. Is that, you know, Tom's comment that he needs, he wants to be available to everyone all the time means that often he's not available because he's got to do other things. Uh, and this, uh, this arrangement that you're proposing, uh, the structure, to me, makes a lot of sense. Uh, I am a, a supporter, uh, and I think it will address, uh, structural issues in, in communications within, uh, various departments and, um, really better coordination. So, um, I fully support this.
Thank you. Uh, Bill, questions or comments with respect to the presentation?
First of all, Tom and Michelle, thanks for putting this together. Tom and I know, Tom, you and I have discussed this, and I am a, a big proponent of this structure as well, uh, for a lot of different reasons. First of all, you know, working with you and Michelle this past year, uh, it's, I'm amazed by the amount of hours that both of you put into, uh, your work, and I thank you for that. And I don't know if, if folks in town realize just how much time you've committed to this community in this town, and it's, it's non-stop sometimes. And I know some days you show up at work and both of you are just going, going, going from the time you start until late into the evening. So I appreciate that. I, the thing I like about this structure is that it creates a reporting, um, structure that's going to allow now you, Tom, to deal with some of the bigger, um, bigger items that you deal with on a regular basis. And, you know, as we, you and I have discussed, these are items that kind of you don't expect, but they're just part of our municipal operations. Things kind of come up unexpectedly. Sometimes they have media attention, sometimes they don't, but they require you to pivot quickly into address major issues that have major ramifications on our town, and it's going to free you up to address some of those, uh, bigger, uh, bigger items. So I think this is, is a great structure, and, um, I'm fully supportive of it. If I could, if you could go to the Recreation slide, I'm sorry, the Field Maintenance slide, Michelle?
I went too far.
Um, so my, my question is, Tom, am I right that the two forty-one is kind of coming out of existing budgets? That, that's not an additional request, right? Like, aren't we, is it some of this money already in the rect budget? And some of it's in the school field budget? It's just kind of being, it's kind of being repurposed and combined? Or is this additional money?
So this is additional money, but I'm going to let Michelle, the answer, because she can get more in depth than I can on this.
You're both right. So the, the two forty-one is additional money. The true request is over three hundred thousand. But what you're seeing here is net of the stuff that's already in budgets, you know, the revenue that we can already apply to this, um, operation. So the two forty-one is the total additional we'll need to put this program and team in place.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
I'd, I'd add a couple of things. I just want to note that at the very beginning, Tom and Michelle, when you indicated the three hundred thousand dollars in additional capital, um, we have asked the Capital Outlet Committee for recommendations for that, and that capital would be townwide. So their recommendations will probably be for some municipal capital, but we would also expect some capital for education. I would note that at the transfer station, our Superintendent Randy Sylvester actually requested two additional personnel this year as part of the budget. Um, Tom and, Tom and Michelle are recommending only one this year, um, but there were two recommended. And, um, you know, with respect to the field project, again, this is townwide and, um, as, as, as Michelle said, when Weston and Sampson came in and looked at our fields, kind of the first thing they said was, be- before you think about expanding fields and, and, you know, rebuilding fields or, you know, improving them, you, you got to kind of take better care of everything you have. Um, and also they identified that a centralized sort of scheduling and centralized maintenance was going to result in more fields being available, um, for sport teams. I think there are many people on this call, myself included, who have had the experience where one of your children has played all their home games in, like, Cohasset or somewhere else. And this, this program is really designed, you know, designed to do that. With respect to the, uh, with respect to the, uh, second ATA role, Michelle and Tom were right that in two thousand nine, two thousand and ten, um, that structure was actually being considered. And people may remember that that was around the time when town finances were pretty tight. So essentially, um, the, the town for, we, we fore, we foregoed. I know that, I didn't say that right, but we forewent. That doesn't sound right either. We, we basically deferred that. Um, we, we deferred it. And, you know, I, I think what you're hearing a lot of us say, and, and Bill and Joe, that, you know, in, in a lot of cases in, in municipal government, it, it seems like the urgent is often crowding out the important. And, um, and, and as we look at an organization of our size and our complexity, it, it gets tougher and tougher to ignore that important work. I, I would also say that, you know, some people might look at this and say, well, you know, instead of, instead of, uh, hiring another professional, you know, maybe we should expand the Board of Selectmen, and maybe we should go to five selectmen, or, you know, let's go crazy and, and even more than that. I, I don't think that's the skill we're looking for here. I think we really need professional management, public finance experience and technical expertise. This town is so fortunate to run on volunteers, and there's so many dedicated volunteers on this line. But a, a town the size and complexity of Hingham really does need a lot of professional management. I think particularly in this finance area, we've had volunteers over the years who have tried to and have made wonderful contributions to the town in terms of their time, de- developing models, um, stepping in on, on complex financial analysis, um, you know, trying to get some of the long-range planning started. And I, I just don't think as a town, we can nor we should rely on volunteers who have that expertise and are willing to devote the significant time that's required to do it. And I, I would just lastly say that, you know, part of our discussion tonight with the budget votes would be that, um, you know, we may be embarking the next year on a townwide effort to assess our financial position, uh, try to uncover revenue opportunities, look at alternate service delivery, and very likely putting forward an override for town meetings consideration for next year. I can't even begin to think about mobilizing that work without this position because the truth of the matter is that, you know, um, putting a couple more things onto the shoulders of our town administrator or assistant town administrator is not a viable solution right now because they are maxed out. And if we wanted to take some of that workload away from them, there's nobody to give it to. So that's, you know, that's a little bit of the, um, the, the rationale that has led up to this. So Tom, Tom and Michelle, again, I, I really appreciate your, um, putting this together, and I, I hope it will inform our colleagues on the Advisory Committee. Michelle, maybe you could close the presentation. I think in terms of additional information, what I'd like to do is, um, just, uh, share with the board a little bit of information that I received from, um, from Dave Anderson. And before I do that, I also just want to acknowledge and thank, um, Dr. Austin and Carrie for submitting, um, the board received a copy of, uh, Dr. Austin, the letter that you prepared for the Advisory Committee. I can't tell you how helpful that, that was. It, um, I think that there were still a lot of questions. You know, as, as you like to remind me, we like to kick the tires. And, um, that letter kicked, that letter helped us kick a lot of tires. But again, I, 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 all kidding aside, uh, it was very thorough. It, it expressed things in ways that, that I, I don't know that we had heard before, and I thought it was very, very helpful in terms of filling in some, some information gaps. I just want to let my colleagues and the public know, I, I don't want to steal Dave Anderson's thunder by reading his remarks, but last, uh, yesterday afternoon, the Advisory Subcommittee, uh, recommended the full proposed education budget request. And that was, uh, sixty-one point eight million dollars, which is a gross amount before deducting the anticipated, uh, federal money coming in that we refer to as S R two and S R three. And, uh, basically, some of the highlights that, that the ACES Committee has said, the education and social emotional impact on students from COVID is indisputable, and the need to address it is urgent. While the number of proposed new FTEs may appear high, when looked in context, it is the ACES recommendation that it is essential. ACES believes that rushing an operational override for this year without the necessary planning could be detrimental to Hingham. Uh, they also felt that it was important to address the immediate learning loss, uh, quickly. ACES also acknowledged that looking ahead, uh, Hingham, as, as they say, will have a problem to solve, which is how do we support the entire town budget in FY twenty-three and beyond? Uh, they referenced the future growth rate of expense, some expenses that must be reduced. But also expressed- but also express confidence that, that, that town, town employees and town leaders will come together and, and work on that. So basically, Bill and Joe, the ACES recommendation is to fully fund the education budget request. I know that the school committee has also taken a vote and that is also the vote that, that they have made. So Joe or Bill, I don't know if you have any specific questions about the letter from Dr. Austin or the ACES recommendation?
I have a, Joe, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm actually calculating something, so you.
All right. So I have a couple of comments if I, if I could. You know, I, I want to, first of all, start by just thanking Dr. Austin, Dr. LaBillaud and the entire school committee for their work this year. I know this was a very difficult year and I, I really appreciate, you know, all they did to do, you know, so much for our students. And I thought they did a wonderful job navigating through some difficult waters. I also want to thank all the parents. We've had tremendous engagement this past year, you know, letters to us, letters in the community. And I think the engagement of everybody was wonderful. So, you know, I haven't really mentioned this at all, but, you know, as many know, I have three children in the school system. And, you know, I, I want to speak to the need of this budget and it's compelling and it's there. And, you know, I, I've seen it with my own children. I've seen, you know, a first grader who's behind their reading. I've seen a second grader who is, whose math skills have fallen down. And I've seen a third grader whose social skills have, are where they should be. So when I, you know, when I got a lot of these letters from parents speaking to those issues and beyond, I, I wholeheartedly agreed. And I think it was a very compelling, there were a lot of compelling reasons to support this budget and to address this learning loss. While the teachers in our community have done a fantastic job, children just do not learn well on computers. And so we, we have to move forward and we have to address that issue. It's imperative we do that. As ACES noted, and I would agree with it, we're going to have some difficult decisions as a community going forward. The override issue will be probably on the warrant next spring. And it's going to be, as I said last week, it's going to be buttressed up against some major debt exclusion requests of our community as well. I can't think of a more compelling debt exclusion need than foster school, something that we probably should have addressed as a community years ago. Now we're just getting to it for a variety of different reasons. And then we also have a commitment as a community to address all the needs of our residents, our seniors and our town employees with another big request. So I want to thank everybody's work on this budget. And lastly, Mary, I want to so much appreciate your stewardship this year and answering questions and helping us get to the port of where we are. And I appreciate, appreciate all you've done and Joe, you as well.
Thanks. Joe, you finished calculating?
I, I did. And if you recall at the last meeting, I had a couple of questions concerning the school budget that I've had the opportunity to address both with Tom and, and Dr. Austin. And really the, the ACES response memo was exceptionally helpful in, in addressing those questions as well. One of the things that I noted, there was a, a pie chart in Dr. Austin's report that sort of allocates the recovery budget by different categories. And it struck me that the high school, the amount allocated to the high school and the amount allocated to the middle school combined were 20, 20% less than the amount allocated to special ed. And it, it really struck home the needs of special ed and the, the balancing challenge that this budget is addressing in terms of the various school departments. And I, I don't know if, if anyone from the school committee or Dr. Austin wants to comment on that, the percentage allocation.
Dr. Austin, would you care to comment?
Well, I, I think that that's right on. I mean, I think we've been saying all along that our focus on this, but this budget presentation were our most vulnerable population of students. And that would be elementary and the, and the special population, special education. And that's exactly where we put those, the vast majority of our resources. That's where the needs are. It's not that there aren't any needs at the other levels as well, but the fact is that that was our focus area. That's what the school committee wanted to focus on when we began to build a budget. And that's exactly where the resources went.
Yeah.
I would also just note that there are special education students in all six buildings. So all of those resources are going to the high school and the middle school as well.
And two, two other points before I, before I close. With respect to what's, what, what, what we can expect and what the families and residents can expect in the fall, I, no one wants to see a repeat this coming fall of our kids not being in school. And so what I've, you know, and I've had an extended discussion with Dr. Austin. I think there's really a commitment to make sure that, to the extent that we can and planning as best we can, there's a strong commitment that we will have our kids in school, even if there's a surge in COVID, assuming that, you know, governments allow us to be operating, that it's so important to the families. We've received so many letters that that commitment is, is strong within, within the school committee as well as the department. So I thank you for that. And one other comment, which I don't see in the budget, and I understand that it needn't be in the budget, is to the extent that there will be recovery programs this summer available for students through a summer school program or however it's structured, to, because to the extent that there is a need for the kids to recover, that doesn't necessarily have to wait until the fall. And some may want to take advantage. And so I, I was glad to hear that that is a commitment of the school department. Dr. Austin, do you want to say anything about that or we can talk about that later?
Yeah, no, we can talk about that later, but I, I, well, I don't mind making a comment either. So thank you for bringing that up. We are, we are going to plan on doing a summer program. The school committee will hear a presentation in April on that and the, and how we'll plan to fund that. So it's not on the budget, but we have other, other alternative ways of funding. And so we will be bringing that to the school committee on April, in April. Thank you.
And with that, I, I really echo Bill Ramsey's comments and the dedication of the team that's been put together to address this is, is overwhelming. The, the comments that we've received from parents, I, I am sure I am months behind in responding to the various emails and, but the messages have been heard loud and clear. My, both of my children graduated from Hingham High School, so I, I see the value and I know the value of, of that school, of, of the entire school department. So I thank you for your efforts.
Dr. Austin, I just had one follow-up question. In the, in the budget materials that you had presented, I thought I saw $97,000 as part of those non-recurring costs that were devoted to summer school. Is that, was I looking at maybe, has that changed or it, because I thought there was funding in there for summer school?
That was actually for compensatory services for special education.
Okay.
And so a different pot of money.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. You know, I, I'm not, I'm not going to retread what my, I, I agree with, pretty much with everything that my colleagues have spoken about. I, you know, I do, and, you know, this is a lot, this is my last budget after, you know, 11 years of this. And it's interesting to me, but I was looking back today on some of the budget comments that I've made, you know, in 2000, in 2015, when I was on the advisory committee and 2018, when I was on ACES or earlier than that and, and on the board. And, you know, one of the things that was kind of a thread through all of it is, is that, is the fact that the budget, the budget growth and the, the education budget growth is just not sustainable. And I think that was pretty obvious before the pandemic. And, you know, I, I just look in the last 10 years and say, if our enrollment grew by 4% and our budget grew by 53% and most of that money was used to just keep the services going, I just once again observe that if we continue on that trajectory, it just makes it harder and harder to add new education programs that, that are either mandated or, or things that represent, you know, best practices. And, you know, when, when we think about the fact that we're in a state with Proposition Two and a Half and, you know, we can, we can not like Proposition Two and a Half, but if 75% of our town's revenue is only growing at two and a half or 3%, and, and we've got an education budget, which, you know, when, if, if this is adopted, if you were to allocate kind of our shared costs, it looks to me like that seven, close to 70% of our dollars directly support education. And, and so the, the math is, as Dave Anderson is going to say more eloquently tonight, that's, that's a math problem. And I, I think one of the things that we've all discussed, and I appreciate the very candid conversation that we've, that we've had, is that if, if that is left unaddressed, it's just going to make it so hard to fund foster school or other new things. And I think for me, one of the, the hurdle that I got over in terms of supporting this budget is that, is that there is a shared commitment from the advisory committee, the Board of Selectmen and the school committee to begin to address that during the strategic planning process. We've, we've been using the expression bending the cost curve. And to me, I, I, I trust that, that as part of the strategic planning effort, that meaningful actions will be taken, that meaningful actions will be carried out. I think we have to be realistic about how quickly those can happen, but it's, it's that shared commitment that we've all made in, in sort of talking about how we move forward that is, that is one of the factors that is, that is driving me towards, you know, supporting this budget recommendation and, and, you know, asking town meeting to consider it. It's, it's, it's a big ask, but I think this year it's, it's kind of the right ask to make. So Bill and Joe, I, I come at it from kind of a slightly different way, but I'm kind of ending up, ending up in the same place as, as both of you are and, and as the ACES subcommittee is. So I think before, Bill and Joe, I think before we kind of vote the budget, and I do want to just give a, you know, give a little bit of an overview of the budget and where the money's coming from, just before we take our votes. But, but before doing that and closing the hearing, as I mentioned earlier, I will open it up to, to comments. I would ask people to please be brief and if, again, focusing on perhaps things that the board, that, that we haven't heard, that we haven't spoken about before, if asked to be recognized, please direct your comments to the chair and give your name and address for the record. Priya Howell?
Hi, Mary. Priya Howell, 26th El Prep. I just wanted to say, you know, as a parent, my primary concern is definitely the school budget and I thank this board for already expressing their support for that. I also just wanted to say that I, I am glad to also hear the support for this, this, the additional assistant town administrator position because I think that, as you said, Mary, our town is much too complex to run the way that it is being run. And just to echo what Tom was saying, as someone who serves on that tree preservation study committee, I do think we could do a lot more if our town administration wasn't stretched so thin. And I'm sure many of the other boards and committees feel that way too. So I'm, I'm glad to hear the support and I hope that our advisory committee will also support that position because I think it is really critical.
Thank you. Anyone else? Libby Lewicki?
Hi, yes.
Are you waving your hand, not raising your hand? I got, took me a minute.
I couldn't figure out how to do it on the screen. Thank you so much. I just want to thank you all for your commitment to the proposed budget this year and that my first year on the school committee did become clear to me that the level services budgeting of the school's budget was not sustainable for the schools and that, that they were going to require more in the near future. And the growing pains wasn't, then it became clear to me that the growing pains that the schools were feeling was also going, happening for the rest of the town and all of the other services. And so last year, when I requested that you, Board of Selectmen, look into an override, it was a big ask and took a lot of guts. And I knew that I was pushing you all in a direction, in a new direction. And I really, really want to express my sincere appreciation for you taking that on and considering it sincerely and getting where we are today and hoping that, you know, I know this, this following year is going to be a lot of work and it'll be interesting to see what happens next year, but I, I just really want to express my thank, my gratitude. Thank you very much for all of your hard work on this.
Thank you. Well, and, and many, many people on this call and our colleagues on the advisory committee, there's been a lot of work put into this process from a lot of different ends. We're delighted at the level of citizen engagement and, you know, we have a lot of work ahead, but I, I'm, I'm confident that we're up, up to the task. Anyone else? Okay, so Bill and Joe, just to kind of let you know how, just the headlines on this budget, and again, this is just maybe a little bit for the benefit of the public as well. So what's going to happen, the way this budget is being funded, is we are using a total of $5 million in one-time money, which is a lot. So it's coming from two places. One part is $2.4 million in our fund balance, in our rainy day fund. And those of you who have been part of our meetings, you know, the, the proposed uses that we have conform with our financial policy. We're still going to have some revenue loss for next year because of the pandemic. We have some one-time costs in the school department and so we're using that money, you know, that's how the use of fund balance. Our, our anticipation is that our local receipt revenue will really, it will really bounce back by the end of next year. And then the second piece is $2.6 million in federal stimulus money. And that's a combination of the American Rescue Plan, what they call government funding, and education relief money, which is called SRR. And we are applying $2.6 million of that in '22. And a year from now, we're being told that we will be getting an additional $1.2 million in the government aid that we can apply to the fiscal year '23 and the '24 budget. So that kind of helps us. But as, as Representative Joan Moschino said last night on, on a League of Women Voters event, she said, be careful that you're not kind of going off a cliff. And I, you know, we are, we are getting kind of close to the edge of the cliff with this budget. And I think, you know, we just, we just want to be clear about kind of four things. Number one, we still have only gotten a lot of broad guidance about the use of the federal money. The, the broad guidance that we've gotten, and, and I think for Dr. Austin and John Ferris, it's, it's the same thing. We, we think we can use it all, but, but what's going to happen if town meeting authorizes this budget, if, is if for some reason we can't use all of that money, we're going to have to backstop this budget with a little more fund balance. And, and we just got to go into this eyes wide open. Secondly, this, this federal stimulus Secondly, this, this federal stimulus money is, is what is funding all of our additional requests. So, and our additional requests, it's a total of 36 positions across the town, 32 in the school, four in the town. And, you know, right now, we can pay for those positions next year, but there's a question mark about, about beyond that. So it is really likely, as people have talked, that we will be asking the town for an override next year. And we've started to talk about a process for doing that, that would consist of an education strategic plan that would include the master plan, um, but that's going to take all our collective effort to, to do that. And we also have to understand that if next year, town meeting for some reason didn't authorize it, we may be in the very difficult spot where we have to contract services. And, and we hope we don't get there, but I think for our board, it's important that the public know sort of how this budget is being funded. So, you know, so, so that's a little bit of the backdrop, Bill and Joe. And, um, I, I would just say before we make our final budget votes, that I think we've had the benefit in the last year, uh, two years of watching the master plan committee, which I think did just a wonderful job in terms of community outreach, community input. Um, and my hope is that as we, as we kind of go through this process for next year, that we can take some of the learnings from the, from the master plan process, because I think it's going to be really important that all community voices are heard. And I think we've heard from a lot of voices this year, but we also know in this community, uh, there's lots of different voices. And my hope is that we all work hard to hear all the different voices so that everybody kind of feels like they've been heard regardless of, of kind of the decisions we make. Um, so with that, uh, Bill and Joe, and, and for members of the public, uh, what we have is, um, we actually have a, a, a document that is a series of budget recommendations that reflects everything we've, we've talked about. It includes the, uh, recommendations that Tom and Michelle walked through, um, for the benefit of our colleagues in the school committee. Um, the specific numbers for the school department is a gross education budget of $61,792,79, with, um, uh, with federal offsets of $1,376,192. So the, the taxpayer-funded portion of the school budget will be $60,415,887. And we've, we've confirmed these numbers with the advisory committee. Um, the document that the board has, which we'll be voting on, also includes capital outlay in the amount of $2,493,580. Um, so we are not going to go through a, a reading of every budget with every, every dollar amount. Um, but what we are going to do is, um, is, is ask for a consent vote of the board, um, on this budget document that, as I said, reflects the school numbers that I just gave out, the capital numbers, and the municipal budget that Tom and Michelle presented. Um, Bill and Joe, as a way to start, I know, Bill, that there are two budgets that you would like to abstain from. So what, uh, Joe, if you're ready, what I might suggest is, um, if you would be willing to offer a motion for the recreation budget, I will then follow up with a, a recommendation for the police budget, and then we will take a vote that all three of us will take on the entire remaining part of the budget.
Um, so Mary, my understanding of the third vote, um, which is the entire budget, is when I look at the numbers, it's not the remaining budget, it's everything including recreation.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So that is the all-inclusive, and it also, it also includes capital outlay.
That's correct. Yes. Yes.
And John Coffin confirmed that that was allowable, uh, even with Bill's recusals for the first two.
Got it. So with that, I would, uh, move to recommend a fiscal year 2022 recreation budget of $349,276.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Abstention.
Up. I just, sorry, Bill, force of habit. Mary? Aye. All right. I'm not going to do that on this next one.
No, actually, Mary, that was, that was good, that he reported as.
Yeah. If you could do that, that'd be great.
Had it planned all along. Um, I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion to recommend an FY 2022 police budget in the amount of $6,324,798.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Bill?
Abstention.
Okay.
If I could note for the record today, I know a lot of people on the call probably wondering why I'm abstaining, but my, um, my brother is a police officer and my spouse is a recreation commissioner, and town council advised that it would be improper for me to vote on those budgets.
Thank you, Bill. Um, Bill, since, since you didn't get to vote on those other two, why don't you make a motion on the, um, the, the next one, which is, you know, kind of a small number?
I'd make a, a motion to recommend an FY 2022 budget as presented in the Town Administrator Budget Recommendations spreadsheet dated March 23rd, 2021, for a total Article VI appropriation
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Uh, thank you. So what we will now be doing, um, again, and just so people can follow these numbers, uh, the budget votes that the board just took, um, are in conformance with the recommendation of the ACES Subcommittee and consistent, uh, with the vote taken by the school committee. Um, our votes will now be forwarded to the advisory committee. On Thursday evening, the advisory committee will be making all of their final budget votes. And it is the votes and recommendations of the advisory committee that actually go into the warrant and are what is, uh, are what is recommended at town meeting. So, uh, so that is the, uh, that is the process by which the budget, the budget will be concluded. Um, next on the agenda, uh, we do not have an inside-town finances for this week, so Tom, uh, the COVID-19 update?
Thought maybe I muted myself. Hold on. Thank you, Mary. Um, so the COVID-19 update for today?
Tom, excuse me, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but, um, I see members of the school committee, and I, I just wanted to carry, did, did you want to adjourn at this time?
Yeah, thank you.
You've had a lot of meetings this week, so I...
Yeah, we appreciate it, and we really appreciate everyone's, uh, support of our budget and of this very thoughtful process. I think we're, we're in a, on a good path going forward. Um, so with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do you want a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Uh, Vness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Liza?
Hi. I don't know. Are you calling me? I can't tell.
Oh, and I, I, I as well, Carrie.
Okay, great. Thanks, everybody, for joining us tonight. Feel free to stay for the COVID-19 update. Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, Tom, take it away. COVID-19 update.
Great. Thank you again, Mary. So according to the public health data from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health released last week, the town's designation once again remains yellow, indicating a medium risk of spread within the community. There have been 81 new cases of COVID-19 in Hingham over the past 14 days, and a total of 1,699 cases in Hingham since the start of the pandemic. The average daily incidence rate for the town of Hingham was 24.1 per 100,000 residents, and our percent positivity rate was 2.67% for the previous 14 days. As of today, confirmed 19 cases in Massachusetts totaled 582,159. Public health metrics have been trending in a positive direction statewide, including drops in average daily COVID-19 cases and hospitalization rates. However, those rates remain higher than they were before the surge hit in the fall of 2020. Regarding vaccine rollout and reopening plans, according to the DPH's Daily COVID-19 Vaccine Report, over 1,110,000 people in Massachusetts have been fully vaccinated as of today. As we mentioned last week, DPH has started to report vaccination rates by community on a weekly basis. As of March 18th, approximately 16.8% of Hingham residents have been fully vaccinated. Last week, DPH announced the, the schedule for vaccine eligibility for all remaining groups in Massachusetts as follows. Yesterday, March 22nd, residents 60 years of, of, oh, 60 years of age and older, and certain workers, including public works, public health, water, and utility workers, become eligible for the vaccine. On April 5th, residents 55 years of, of years of age and older, and residents with one certain medical condition become eligible. And on April 19th, the general public, uh, ages 16 and above, come eligible for the vaccine. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Um, Joe or Bill, any questions for Tom?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone in the public have a question with respect to the COVID-19 update? Uh, seeing none. Uh, public comment on items not on the agenda? Uh, Selectmen and Town Administrator Reports. Michelle?
Nothing, Mary. Thank you.
Tom?
I just wanted to congratulate, uh, the Police Department with the, the appointment of those lieutenant positions today. And, um, and I know that as we move forward, we'll be looking at sergeants and other positions, and that department is becoming fully staffed, which is just so important. Um, so very happy for them and thank them for all the work that they do.
Thank you. Uh, Joe?
I've got, uh, two, um, events I want to note. Uh, first, uh, tomorrow, March 24th, will be marked as Education and Sharing Day USA by the US Congress and the President. And this has been a national event since 1978, when it was started during the presidency of Jimmy Carter. It is celebrated every year on the birthday of Rabbi Menachem Schneerson in recognition of his achievements for the betterment of education for all Americans, as a day to raise awareness and strengthen the education of our children. President Joe Biden today, uh, signed this year's Declaration for Education and Sharing Day USA. I'm just going to read, uh, a small part of President Biden's declaration. A quote, "If the isolation and loss of the last year has taught us anything, it is just how much we need each other, how intertwined our lives are, and how deeply we crave conversation, connection, and community. We are at our best when we work together and help our neighbors, whether down the road or around the world. This lesson is at the heart of Education and Sharing Day USA, when we celebrate the role models, mentors, and leaders who devote themselves to the progress and success of each new generation, to reinforcing our common bonds and to lifting up our highest ideals. Today, we mark the legacy of Rabbi Menachem Mendel Schneerson, the Lubavitcher Rebbe, a guiding light of the international Chabad-Lubavitch movement, and a testament to the power and resilience of the human spirit. In witness to some of the 20th century's darkest events and greatest tragedies, he devoted his life to bringing healing by advancing justice, compassion, inclusivity, and fellowship worldwide. A tireless advocate for students of all ages, he sought to foster exchange, understanding, and unity among all people." Um, and the second item, keeping up on the Jewish theme, uh, is that the holiday of Passover, which is the Jewish festival of freedom, will begin this Saturday evening, March 27th. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Bill?
Um, the only in report is, um, Keith German, our veteran service officer, is, uh, working on, uh, a virtual reenactment of the Battle of Grape Island. It's kind of a very interesting and kind of a cool part of our, of our town's history. And, uh, it's going to be done virtual this year, so Keith's kind of coordinated all the different, uh, components in town, the militia, um, some other folks who participate. And as a Selectmen liaison to Veterans Affairs, I'm going to be, uh, filming my part, uh, this week, so I'm looking forward to that. Should be exciting, and I think it's going to be a great product for everybody to see once it's done.
And, and Bill, um, I see Keith is on the line, so I think it's important that anybody participating, um, Keith needs to drop off a little bit of that rum that Mr. Levitt gave the, uh, you know, gave, gave the Brits, just as a, you know, a little, a little thank you, so. Um, it'll be, it'll be really nice when, um, it'll be nice when we can commemorate those special, those special days in person. Um, and, and we also appreciate, uh, Keith and our other department heads, just sort of ingenuity in continuing to, to bring these things to life, uh, in the community. Uh, Bill, anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Uh, I just had, uh, two things. Uh, last Wednesday, uh, I attended the Library Board of Trustees meeting, uh, in, in my role as chair. I am also, uh, um, a trustee of the library. I see Lucy Hancock, the Chair of the Trustees, is on. I just want to let the public know that the library is working very closely with, with Tom and Michelle and Susan Sarny and the rest of the reopening group, um, on safely opening up the library and, um, uh, you know, just again, a, a shared commitment to doing that. And, uh, I would also just note that, um, as, as the weather has improved, uh, the patio at the South Shore Country Club is back open. Um, the Country Club and the Greenside Grill, they're, they're actually now open for lunch. Uh, they are also open for dinner. And, um, you know, as, as we still continue to work our way out of this pandemic, uh, the Greenside Grill and, and all of our local restaurants, um, I think are really relying on the support of the community to, uh, you know, to help maintain their viability. And, um, uh, I highly recommend the South Shore, I highly recommend the South Shore Patio, uh, and they just do such a nice job there. Uh, so, uh, Thursday night, our board is going to be attending, uh, the advisory committee meeting, which is where all the budgets will be voting. Uh, we do have a meeting set up for that evening in the event that we need to revote any budgets for any adjustments made by the advisory committee. Uh, it is always our goal that the school committee, advisory committee, and Board of Selectmen, uh, are all in full agreement, uh, with respect to budgets going into town meeting. Uh, so we'll be doing that. And then, uh, a week from today, uh, which will be March 30th, we will, uh, we will have our next, uh, business meeting of the board. And, um, as, as Tom and Michelle pointed out, um, a, a very busy, a very busy agenda. We will be inter, we will be, over the next few weeks, uh, interviewing police candidates. We will be hearing from the planning board on their warrant articles, uh, and, uh, all kinds of other things. So, uh, anyway, we thank everybody for joining us tonight, and I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Go move. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.
[music]